Good evening.
We're set six o'clock at 6:05, so we're kind of right on Christian time. We're hoping that we get all the stragglers in and get this party started. Would you join me in a word of prayer? Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening and we ask your blessing upon our gathering. We ask your blessing upon this great work that we're about to undertake. Lord, we lift it up before you and we ask your blessing upon it, that you would make Cornerstone Christian School the salt and the light for young people, for their families, for all of Lake County, that we would effectively carry your good name wherever we go, that we would be of influence for good, that righteousness would prevail, and that your name would be high and lifted up. And so, Lord, blessings tonight, we pray from you in Jesus' name. Amen. All right, so my name is Chris Ardillo and I'm the pastor here at First Baptist, and I think I can safely say I'm probably the newest guy to Lake County in the room, right? So I am here to tell you that my wife and I have enjoyed such a warm welcome from everybody in this town, whether it be just the average person on the street, or certainly the folks from the fellowship here. You certainly know how to make a stranger feel welcome, and I appreciate that. It goes a long way. And we moved here from northwest Washington, so about an hour and twenty minutes north of Seattle, which we affectionately call Crazy Town, which we actually think we escaped from, didn't move from, escaped from that area. It was, it's a pretty different environment. It's very refreshing to be here in this small town with wholesome folks that love their families and love Jesus and want to treat their neighbor with kindness. It's not commonly found where we just moved from, and so thank you for that. I appreciate that. It goes a long way for welcoming us and making us feel at home. If I could, I would like to read a couple of passages for you that we are using as our launchpad for this school. Of course, you know, you're gathering here tonight to learn more about Cornerstone Christian School. That's the name freshly minted. We came up with it by process, an intricate, detailed process where we threw a whole bunch of names in a hat and pulled them out and winnowed them down and found out how many were in favor of this one and that one, and we finally ended up with Cornerstone Christian School. So we're looking for that idea that, you know, sometimes people think of the cornerstone in the Bible as being the base stone or the foundation stone for the temple, but that's not actually how it played out. What happened was they carved all the stones for Solomon's Temple off-site, so there were no hammer or chisel sounds on the temple mount. They carved all these stones off-site and they quarried them down the road, and so they sent these stones, each of them perfectly hewn, to occupy the space that they were designated for in the temple, and they sent them on the road up ahead. Well, at a certain point, along about the beginning of the building of it, they had this one stone show up that had all kinds of different angles and corners carved into it, and it was puzzling to the builders because we're laying foundation stones here and this doesn't fit anywhere. And so they, not knowing what to do with it, they rolled it off into the side of the temple mount there and left it and forgot about it. And then they proceeded to build Solomon's Temple, the first temple, where the glory of God came down and abode with a cloud in the presence of all the people of Israel. And they're just about to finish this temple, and they realized the capstone, the keystone, the one that would keep all of the other stones of the building from falling in and collapsing, where's that? And so they called down to the quarry and say, "We're looking for this stone." And the quarry sent back a message that said, "We sent that stone to you a long time ago, years ago. You've got that stone. It's up on the temple mount." And so they made a good search for it, and they found it in the weeds there. This stone that the builders rejected at first became the precious cornerstone that once set in place held the whole thing together, kept it from collapsing. And so we look to that story as a great example of how Jesus, in my life, has already laid a foundation, he's already caused me to build on the rock that he is, but he is that completion for me. He's the one that makes my life complete and whole, and when he comes in, all of the, he's covered every angle in my life, if you will. And when he's in place, high and lifted up in my life, it keeps my world from collapsing around me, and it makes a place where the temple of God, where the presence of God is, where I can go and worship him. I love that story, and I love that name, and I'm hoping that we could provide to the children that God will send to us, we could provide the message of the good news that Jesus Christ is that precious cornerstone in their life as well. In the Book of Deuteronomy, it says in chapter six, beginning in verse five, it says, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and with all your strength. And these words which I command you today shall be in your heart; you shall teach them diligently to your children, and shall talk of them when you sit in your house, and when you walk in the way, and when you lie down, and when you rise up. You shall bind them as a sign on your hand, and they shall be as frontlets between your eyes, and you shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates." What he's saying here is the word of God is living and powerful, and it should be part of every bit of our lives. And so that's what we're looking to do here. Some folks get the idea of life as like a TV dinner. I got my meat here, well, that's my family. I got my potatoes over here, well, that's my church family. I got my veggies over here, well, that's my work, and you know, that dessert, and all things are separate. I've never found that to be the case. To me, life is not like a TV dinner, life is like a chicken pot pie. It's all mixed in there together. Who I am at home makes me who I am at work, makes me who I am at church, in the community, and so we like that to be, I like that to be said of all of us as Christians, that we are the salt and the light in the community. You won't find a different Chris Ardillo out in the community than you find at home when nobody's looking. I love folks, I treat them as I wish to be treated myself, and it's my hope that we would make Christian, young men and women, grow in the grace and knowledge of their Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, here at this school. And so there's just one more scripture that I'd like to share, and it's from 1 Corinthians chapter 10, verse 31. It says, "Whatever you do, whether in eating or drinking, do it all for the glory of God." And so that's our goal here, to train up children in the way they should go, so that when they're old, they won't depart from it. Not do your job for you as parents. We know God gave them to you, your stewards over those children, they're precious in his sight. He's given them to you so that you can raise them and love on them and point them in the direction they should go. But we hope to come alongside you as the family of God, and we hope to encourage you, to equip you, and to make families stronger because they came here, whether it's came here for church, or came here for school, or both, or just one. We hope that every time we interact with one another, we'd make each other stronger and better. And so with that, I'd like to just read for you our mission statement. So if you have on yours, very second page there after the goals and introduction stuff, it says, "Our mission statement and philosophy." It's just best to read that. Cornerstone Christian School's mission is to partner with families to provide a Christ-centered education, biblically developing the entire student, spirit, mind, and body. We will integrate the word of God throughout all disciplines with the goal of sending well-educated disciples into the world to reach the lost with the gospel. So our philosophy is the Cornerstone Christian School's philosophy of Christian education is based on the truth of God's word and the standard for all truth, and that the Bible is inspired, inherent, and authoritative word of God. God created and sustains all things. Education in preschool starts with basic skills grounded in an appreciation of God and his creation, combined with social skills built around Christian love and respect. The elementary and high school curriculum contains the biblical foundation of God's truth and the understanding of the differences between a secular and Christian worldview. So we will make it our aim to be Christians, to talk like Christians, to not use worldly wisdom in our classrooms, but to train up children in the Lord. And so we'll ask that if you're going to send your kids here, you don't have to dot every i with us and cross every t with us as far as doctrinally goes, that's certainly not the point. But we would ask that you would allow us to teach your children the Lord Jesus Christ, and we're going to do that to the best of our ability, because we will one day stand before him and give an account as to how we were stewards over the blessings that he gave us. And that blessing would certainly include the children that he sends our way to our school. So with that, I'll invite Casey Tames up here for us to help us get some information. We will certainly be available here tonight to answer any questions and fill in any gaps you might have.
So I want to thank you all for coming out tonight to learn more about our school, and I want you to know that this has been a labor of love, and a lot of time and a lot of prayer have been put into this decision to move forward with the school and everything that you find in this packet tonight. And I would just like to take a moment so you can see some of the folks that have helped with the development of this, and so if you have questions afterwards, you might be able to talk to one of them. So if you have been at the planning committee meetings, if you could please just stand so people can see you. Okay, so those are just some of the people that have been helping with this. So like I said, afterwards, you can go and talk to them, if you can't get to myself or Pastor Chris. So as Pastor Chris says, this is a Christian school. And so we will be talking about Jesus at our Christian school, but we will also be talking about the ABCs and the 1-2-3s, that we're here to educate your children. So that is our goal and our objective is to do that. So if you want to go ahead and turn to the next page, you will see that we do have goals and objectives. I'll just hit the highlights, that we will prepare students to be spiritually growing individuals, effective communicators, healthy individuals, servant leaders, community participants, critical thinkers, and have them academically prepared to be lifelong learners. So you can read on some more. The other thing that I want to highlight for you is the next page is our church's statement of faith. And as Pastor Chris said, you do not have to agree with everything that it says here. However, you need to know this is what will be taught at our school, the whole thing. And as a parent, on the very next page, you are going to see that we are going to ask you to read and acknowledge our statement of faith, our mission statement and philosophy, and agree that it will be upheld in all aspects at school or school functions. So you may look at it and be like, "Oh, okay, I'm not sure about that." However, you need to know this is what your children are going to be taught. So we want to make sure that you have all the information you need in making a decision on whether or not you would like to send your child here. So that brings me to the next page, which is our parent agreement. We're going to be asking parents and students, we're going to give a standard and we're going to ask you to hold to that standard. We feel like that we need to have parental support in what we're going to be doing here, and because we're going to be working as a team. As Pastor Chris said, you have been giving your children, God has blessed you with those kiddos, and it is, you are the primary educator of your child, and we just want to partner with you in that. But with the partnership, we have to agree on certain things. And so for sake of time, we're not going to go over every last thing, but this will be something that as a parent you will need to read and understand, and that you will have to sign and abide by. I don't want us to sound all rulesy or anything like that, but one of our goals is to have a place where your kids can come and feel loved, and be educated, and feel safe, and not be worried about what their friend might say to them. And so on the next page, you will see that there's a student code of conduct. So it says, the top of it says, "The following is to be reviewed and signed by the student and the parent." And I'm going to highlight a few of these things, because again, we want you to know what you're signing up for, okay? And you'll notice after each one of these things, there are references. So the Bible gives us many principles for living, but the following have been identified as specific guidelines for student behavior. A list of responsibilities is below, but should not be considered all-inclusive. We're going to ask students to be obedient and respectful to adults and other authority figures. We're going to ask them to be respectful and courteous to their classmates, and that physical or verbal intimidation, threats of harm, or peer pressure are prohibited and will not be tolerated. We'll ask them to respect the property of others, that they will conduct themselves with honor and integrity in both spoken and written word. They will use wholesome speech and respect the name of God, Christianity and his church, and will not use profanity, swearing, or coarse language. They will be modest in their dress and appearance, and we do have a dress code that we'll highlight in just a moment. That the biblical view of gender, let me read it so I don't mess up here. "I will uphold the biblical view of gender and adhere to CCS's position on gender issues in its policies, teachings, curriculum, and treatment of students." Cell phones. "I will use cell phones, computer technology, and social media appropriately and responsibly," and we do have an electronics policy that we will go over. "That they will inform those in authority if they hear of anyone threatening to hurt someone else, and that they will not be hurting themselves." The last two I will not read, because we do have little kids in the room, and I don't feel that some of this pertains to them and is an appropriate thing, but children that are older will have to read those things and abide by them as well. So we will have standards that your kids will have to follow, because we want this to be a positive experience, and those are just general biblical principles of how we should act. And so we're going to be teaching your kids about that, and I think when kids follow those things, it makes the day wonderful, and it makes teaching happen so much easier when there's not a bunch of behavioral issues. Briefly, there's going to be a conflict. Briefly, there's going to be a conflict resolution policy, so that is in there. So that you know as parents, if there is an issue, this is going to be how you're going to handle it. And the biblical principle is when there is a problem, you go directly to the person that you have a problem with. Don't go and talk to a bunch of other people or try and go over their head. Go right to the person and in respect, talk to them about what the problem is. Then if you can't get resolution for that, then there is other steps that you can take. As someone said, keep your account short. So we believe in going right to the person that there's a problem with in love and respect. We won't tolerate parents coming in and yelling at teachers or berating them or sending emails that are unkind. That's not acceptable either. We handle things in mature fashions when there's a problem. Let's deal with it and we'll be able to do that. So dress code. We have decided that we would like students to wear school shirts. We will have available for purchase different types of shirts because some kids just are way warmer temperature all the time than other children, so to expect them to wear a long-sleeve shirt might not be practical for them. So we'll have like school t-shirts, school polo shirts, long-sleeve shirts, sweatshirts. So we're going to ask that the top half represent the school. And then the bottom half. Also, you'll have more freedom in deciding what the bottom half is going to look like. But as we were writing this, I wrote it the first time and it made it sound like bottoms were going to be optional. Bottoms are not optional. Your child does need to wear bottoms to school. But we're going to be a little more lenient on what that looks like. So we're talking jeans, khakis, cargo pants, things like that, shorts, skirts. Hems need to be no more than one inch above the knee. And we don't want ripped, holy pants. And sweats and joggers also will not be allowed. Leggings will be allowed if they are worn under skirts or jumpers. And I'm not talking the preschool age children. I'm talking, I'm talking the older, yeah. I'm not talking preschoolers here. So that is going to be what our dress code is. And really, if you think about it, it actually makes your life as a parent easier because your child won't get to decide other than, do you want to wear this colored shirt or this colored shirt this morning? That's what the school says you have to wear. So it takes the burden off of you real easy. So our cellphone and electronics policy. Cell phones, basically all electronics, will not be in your child's possession during school time. They will be, so let me just read it for you. Cellphone, smartwatches, AirPods, tablets, personal laptops, and other electronics will not be allowed to be in your child's possession at any time during school hours. They may be brought to school if necessary for communication after school hours, but will be placed in his designated location for the entire school day. If you need to communicate with your child during school hours, we will have an office person where you can call and they will get a message right away and that it will be sent to them. We feel that they're just a big distraction, and if we have a blanket policy of nope, then it just makes life much easier. I think the majority of us who are adults in here, we lived without cellphones when we were in school and we all made it out okay. So we're just, we just feel like it's just too much of a distraction, and if we have a blanket policy, it'll just make things much, much easier. Now to get to probably what everybody is really here for is what our general information is about what our school is going to look like. So we anticipate that all classes will be held here on our campus, and that includes this building, and across the parking lot is another small house. We have a large upstairs facility right now. It houses our kindergarten and our preschool, and we still have room left over. We have remodeled in that building over there for room for more children over that way. If for some reason we have more kids than we have space, we'll be calling other churches and asking them what kind of space they have for us is our intention at this time. Our class schedule will be four days, will be a four-day school week of Monday through Thursday for grades K through 12, all four, or all the grades. We anticipate that grades K through eight will meet from four to four and a half hours each day, and for grades nine through 12, for five to five and a half hours per day. Small class sizes and focusing on meaningful work will make a shortened day very successful. A shortened day allows students to pursue other activities and gives them more time to be with their families. And I can speak to this personal experience right now. We have kindergarten and we meet from eight to 11:45. We get everything done that we need to and still have lots of time for art activities, playing down here in the sanctuary or outside when the weather allows, and even free play time in the classroom. So we do get everything we need to get done. I know that that might be hard to believe, how could you get it all done? But you really can get it done when you have a smaller class and when you have kids that are focused and when we're just meaningful work. Class size, classes will be kept small with approximately 10 to 15 students in each class. And the demographics of that class, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like right now. It just depends on who comes. You know, if we have 10 third graders, we might have a 10, a third grade class. If we've got five first graders and seven second graders, it's just going to depend on the kids. The great thing is the curriculum that we have chosen, which is My Father's World, was written specifically for multi-age classrooms. So it will make it very easy to do. There are advantages to multi-age classrooms where you have older kids helping younger kids. And we did a little bit of an experiment this last year with Vacation Bible School where we mixed up the age groups. And the younger children rose to the level of the older children. The older children didn't go down to the lower level. The youngers rose to the occasion. And so we got to see that firsthand and it was great. So as I said, the curriculum we're going to use is My Father's World. My Father's World is a Christian curriculum which combines the best of Charlotte Mason ideas, Hebraic classical education, and unit studies with a biblical worldview and a global focus. My Father's World is a God-centric curriculum which mirrors the Greco-Roman classical approach of grammar, logic, and rhetoric. My Father's World in a micro school, and that's what we're calling ourselves, is a micro school. It thoroughly integrates God's Word across a variety of subjects, is designed so a teacher can seamlessly lead multiple children across a wide age range, can be taught easily by a small team of teachers, provides step-by-step daily lesson plans for minimal prep and maximum ease of use, is structured to cover required subjects in less time than an average public school day, encourages older children to help by sharing knowledge with younger children. So attached is a scope and sequence from My Father's World. It's a very brief scope and sequence, but you can see how, starting in about third or fourth grade, we start to go through the whole scope of history. And the idea is you have a mixed age group and you're doing all of these things together. However, math and writing and English will be taught at grade level for the kids. So that part will be great specific for the children. I highly encourage you to go on to My Father's World, their website, and you can really see what the curriculum looks like. Again, you can download free samples of what the teacher's manuals look like, and it'll give you a really good idea of what your child's day might look like. So for math, we'll use different curricula for various grades. There's also attached a math scope and sequence. I apologize for the really, really lengthy dimensions math scope and sequence. I could not find anything that was more condensed than that. And I did not have time to go through and try and condense that. So it is lengthy. So we expect teachers at CCS will be in full agreement with our mission statement, philosophy, and statement of faith. All staff will have to successfully pass a background check. Teachers will be selected by CCS's advisory committee and confirmed by the deacon board of First Baptist Church. Faculty at CCS will have at minimum a high school diploma or equivalency. A college education is preferred with at least a two-year degree. Faculty and staff members of CCS are to be members in good standing of either First Baptist Church or a church of similar faith and practice. So our teachers, I fully expect that we will have licensed certified teachers here, but we will also have teachers that may not be licensed. That doesn't mean that they're not qualified to teach. We will make sure that they have all that they need to teach successfully. But I know that that's a question that some people may have. We have had teachers on our planning committee who have lent their expertise to us and will be there and continue to be there for us. Just so we're being fully transparent, not all of our teachers will hold an Oregon teacher's license. That also makes it more affordable for your kids to come here to make CCS affordable for families. Salaries for our teachers are going to not be extravagant. However, we want to honor them and their time with a salary that is going to be able to provide for their family needs. So if you turn the page over, fees and tuition. Curriculum and materials fees. This is going to be due upon registration, and you'll see that kindergarten is $250. First grade is $350, second through sixth is $400, and seventh through 12th is $650. What this covers is all of the consumable curriculum that your child is going to need for their schooling for that one year. It also is going to cover paper and glue and copies and all of those other things that are going to be necessary for educating your kids. So down here at tuition, kindergarten through eighth grade, we are looking at $2,500 per year. Ninth through 12th grade, $3,000 per year. And we will give you different options on how to pay that. If you pay it in full, that's a 10% discount. So if you pay it in full by the end of July, you will receive a 10% discount for the year's tuition. If you pay in 10 installments, you'll see there kindergarten through eighth will be $250, ninth through 12th will be 300. And if you pay in 12 installments, $210 and $250. And you will see that if you pay in 12 installments, you'll start paying in July and will be finished with that year in June. When you register your child and you pay your materials and curriculum fee, and if you decide this is not going to work out for you, you will not be refunded that money because the materials will have to be purchased beforehand, and so we won't be able to do that. So you're looking at the curriculum and materials fee. Once you've registered, that is a non-refundable dollar amount. So tuition and fees will not cover all the costs associated with the school. Fundraising will likely occur, and the church here, this isn't in here, but First Baptist Church will also be subsidizing. We won't be paying for the toilet paper we use, or the paper towels, or the soap, or things like that. So the church as a whole is helping to make this affordable as well. We desire to keep tuition as low as possible, and depending on the number of students enrolled, we may be able to offer a small discount for families with multiple students. We know it can be a challenge to pay for educating your child, and we have made tuition as low as we possibly can. We are well below the monthly average of most Christian schools in Oregon, which are $500 to $1,000 per month. We intend to have a school-wide parent and staff meeting in January of 2025 to discuss CCS's financial health. As we begin this new endeavor, things may change, and we want to be transparent as we seek to be good stewards of school finances. And then you'll see the steps for enrollment. Parents will fill out an enrollment application and sign the parent agreement. Students will sign the student agreement. The school advisory board will then review the application. If the application is approved, an interview will be scheduled. If the application is not accepted, parents will be notified and be given the opportunity to arrange a follow-up discussion if desired. After the interview, the students will, enrollment will either be approved or denied. And while we desire to educate every student interested in attending CCS, we know that this might not be the right fit for every family. So here's some other frequently asked questions that we've gotten so far. Recession. I know that recess is important. Yes, there will be time for play. There will be time scheduled for students to be able to move and play every school day. Some day structured games will be played during that time. During bad weather, the church's sanctuary makes a great gym, and the kids who go here can attest to that. Once you pull all these chairs up, this is a fantastic runaround spot. And so when the weather's bad, that's what we do. And we're going to make that available to all the kids. Will we have a playground? Maybe, hopefully. That would be great some in the near future, but we can't guarantee that right now. But what we can guarantee is your child will be able to move around and run around. And I know that's very important, especially in the younger years and even the teenage years, right Zach? After-school programs. We understand that a shortened day may make childcare difficult for working families, but currently we do not have after-school care plans. But we are willing to discuss that possibility if it is necessary. So if this is something you're interested in or feel like that could be a deciding factor for you, please come and talk to us. Next page, food. With a shorter day for grades K through eight, a lunch period will not be necessary. However, we will have a snack time midway through the morning. Students will be responsible for bringing those snacks in. For grades nine through 12, a short lunch break will likely be scheduled. Students will also be responsible for bringing their lunch in. Now, does that mean if someone forgets their snack, we'll make them starve? No. Our kitchen is full of preschool snacks and we'll find something, but it's going to be the responsibility of parents to send their children with a snack. Accreditation. We are not an accredited school currently. Accreditation does not guarantee a good education. Non-accreditation does not mean a poor education. Our teachers will be equipped to teach the material appropriate for each grade level, and students' progress will be assessed every year to make sure they are meeting standard benchmarks. High school students will have the same number and type of credits needed to graduate as the rest of the students in Oregon. Sports. At this time, we have not had a conversation with the high school as to whether or not they will allow our students to participate. I anticipate that we will have a conversation about that in the near future. And scholarships for college. At this time, the requirement for some of the scholarships awarded to Lake County graduates state that the student must be a resident and educated in Lake County for all four years of high school. It does not specifically mention that they must attend LHS, Paisley, or Northlake. Homeschooled students have been awarded these scholarships in recent years. As we have not had a direct conversation with any of the Board of Trustees of the scholarship, we cannot give a definitive answer as to whether our graduates will be able to apply. The next is just a sample registration form that will, we haven't finalized our registration form, but it will probably look a lot like this one that's here. So and then you'll see that My Father's World, scope and sequence. And you'll see that we will be teaching your children science, and we will be teaching them history. It's not just all Bible. Your child will be ready to be a productive adult by the time they leave here. That is our aim and our goal. And so what's really fun about My Father's World is it has a lot of hands-on stuff for kids. I know in the upper grades, they'll learn chemistry and biology, algebra. I will not be teaching that. Kindergarten math is right up my alley. We're adding to the number 10, so that's just perfect. So if you look, there's just a lot of great things that your child is going to be able to learn, and it's very exciting. And myself and Pastor Chris and two other people will be going to My Father's World headquarters, and they are putting on a conference, and we will be a part of that where they teach us the ins and outs of how to incorporate their curriculum over multi-age level classes. So we're really excited. That's in a couple of weeks, and we'll come back even more. That's in a couple of weeks and we'll come back even more prepared and have more answers. So the rest of it is all just scope and sequence. The very last page is interest level of attending Cornerstone Christian School. We just ask that however you're feeling tonight after we're done talking, that you please take a moment and fill that out for us. We have absolutely no idea how many kids are going to come and we want to be able to have as many kids as we can. But we kind of have to have a vague idea of how many people are interested so we can continue moving forward with our plans. Right now, the goal is to open enrollment right around May 1st to get that started. With it being completed by the end of the month, that way you as parents and us as a school will know what's happening and can make our plans for the fall. Okay, with all of that being said, we are now open for any questions you guys may have. Yes?
Hi, Lane Strab, Lake County USD. Two things, if you do not op, if you do not offer sports, then by OSAA rules, the closest school in your home region has to allow your high school students to participate.
Good to know. Thank you.
The next thing is on your scholarship piece. Cause I am also a homeschool parent, kind of it's a different deal. Not only do they have to go to high school all four years in the Lake County area, their parents must reside.
Reside, okay.
And they need to reside past the selection date that the committee needs and that's usually around Father's Day in June.
Okay.
So parents and family can't move after graduation.
Okay.
And I work with the trustee with homeschool and alternative schooling. Things that we're trying to figure out some stuff, so it might be good that you.
We'll coordinate with you. That'd be great.
Great, thank you very much for that information. Yes. Yeah, and so on that table back there is a wire basket. Yeah, so when you have filled it out, if you couldn't put it in there, yeah.
Yeah, you said that.
Yes. Oh, okay, I'm sorry if I didn't. I thought that was in there, but who knows? It could have been edited out at some point. These, these documents have been worked and reworked, I don't know how many times. And eight o'clock. With likely the younger grades getting out at 12:30 and the older grades getting out at 1:30. So we're looking K through eight is, would be the 12:30 end time and then high school would be the 1:30 end time is what we're looking at. Yes?
Are you keeping the lower preschool?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the preschool.
Are we keeping the lower preschool?
Yeah, the little ones, Christian preschool, yes. The preschool will still be here, yes. Yep, yep. We're going to sign up for that. It will also be the first part of May. Yeah, yes.
What's your targeted teacher to child ratio?
10 to 15 students per teacher with younger grades. And when I say younger grades again, I'm talking eighth and below towards the 10 mark with high school being the upper mark of that, upper number, yeah.
And what the licensed teacher would do in the upper grade?
Don't know yet, don't know yet, yeah. We don't have anybody hired at this point. We have interested people, yeah. But we don't, we don't know for sure where they're going to be placed. Yes. All I know is I will not be teaching algebra. That's, that's a for sure and for certain. Yes. Did I mention that? Okay, okay. I'm just covering my base.
Settle down.
Yes. Did you have another question?
Do we, will we have one more meeting before we make a final decision on like who exactly we have as first teachers instead of joining?
Um, you know, I don't know. Tonight and follow-up in the next couple of weeks, because I know that there are people who were not able to attend tonight and we would like to hear from them as well. How many students are interested is how we're going to figure out how many teachers we're going to have to hire. So we may not have teachers completely in place. But you, in here, it does say what we are looking for in teachers and what will be required of them. So hopefully, I, I don't, at this time, no, no. Yes?
Is there a plan for communicating progress, individual progress per student with parents?
Yes, yes. Those things, parent-teacher conferences, monthly newsletter. If there's issues happening, that will be sent via emails and things like that.
We're also looking at partnering with an organization that has legal representation for Christian schools and they provide sort of lots of different things, not the least of which is state testing. So like the Iowa State exams that, that declare, you know, this child is ready to progress to the fourth grade from the third grade. And they'll meet those minimum standards and it's my hope that we'll utilize those kind of tests to show off our kids and how good of a job they're doing and that we'll not only meet the minimum requirements, but will well exceed what the other schools around us are doing.
Okay, follow-up after that. What state are they going to base that on? You mentioned Iowa?
Well, they're called the Iowa State Testing. So that's, it's a national.
No. No, no, no. And like for high school students, Oregon does have minimum standards as to what credits they need to have and what they need to be in and we will be following those. Yes?
Is that the grade level for giving a freshman and at the end of the school year, do they have the same amount of credit as a freshman at the high school would have?
Um, it, yeah. The thing that might be a little bit different is like what science they took that year or what history they took that year. But there still will be a history credit and a math credit and those kind of things. What it might look like exactly might be slightly different than the public school. Yeah. Yes, yes, there will be electives. Yep, yep.
Are we going to use traditional grading or is it the standard space?
No, traditional grading, traditional grading, yeah.
You get an A in my book for asking that question. I couldn't even decipher the new stuff.
Yes, yes. We may look like we might be taking a step back in time, but I don't know that that's a bad thing. So, yeah. Anybody else? We will post a calendar when we get, when we get one figured out.
This meeting was really essential for us to, to get a scope of like who's even interested. Like we had no idea, are we going to have 10 kids? Are we going to have 100 kids? So before you leave here tonight, please let us know with those information cards. Because we're going to use this as a barometer of how we proceed, how many teachers we hire, what our facility needs to look like. We have a few rooms that are tiny that we could separate or take away a separation wall and make one normal-sized room. We don't want to go through all that if it's not going to be necessary. So we'd love to, after tonight, come back with a chunk of information that would be of value to you as interested parties.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hi, are you, since you talked about the calendar, are you going to follow the same rates?
Most likely it will look very similar, very similar. Yes, yep.
There was somebody had their hand up over there.
That was my question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, our start and stop date is going to be a little bit different. We anticipate a start date of the Monday following Labor Day. The Monday following Labor Day.
It always struck me as odd that, you know, like public school would start on a Thursday or a Wednesday and then you have one or two days and then you start.
I'm, I'm a Monday start person, so.
Peel the Band-Aid off, summer breaks over, get back to work.
Yeah, yeah. That also gives us all time to recover from the Lake County Fair and Roundup. Yes.
So I have a question for, like, if you have a, you know, are high school sports that travel so far? And I believe starts at 9:12 in the morning. Is it a tennis hall or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, well certainly. A comedy.
Mm-hmm, yep, yes. We actually have the start of a library specifically for school. Our church also has a library and we will continue to be working on that library. So yeah, we will have a library available. Yes?
Do you want the native books? Do you accept the name into the library or do you not want that?
Um, we will, but maybe not right at this point in time. When, when we get, when we know where we're going to put the library, then yes, yes, yeah.
I only recently learned that it wasn't pronounced lib-ary, so.
Any other questions or comments?
How are you going to address IEP specialized?
Good question. That's on our registration or our application form. We are going to ask if your child has had a special education diagnosis. And we will work our best with students that may have those things, but we do not right now have on staff a special education teacher. So children that are severely impacted with lots of learning delays or disabilities, we may not be able to have. But things like they need extra test time, yes, we can accommodate that. They need the question read to them, we can accommodate those things. Thankfully, I do know someone who is getting her degree in special education so she can be a resource. Yes?
So I think, did you say that you guys will be offering electives?
Yes.
If so, are you going to be partnering like with Lakeview High School or somewhere else for like a foreign language at FFA?
So something like FFA, we, we don't know what that might look like, but like foreign language, we would have that as an elective here at the school. Yes. Yeah, and we have not had a direct conversation yet about the FFA program and I have no idea what it would take for us to even start our own program here at the school. We haven't gotten that far yet. Yes?
Is there an additional need for that?
No, I'm pretty sure the curriculum and materials fee also included all of that. Where I got those numbers from was from the curriculum company, My Father's World. And that was our, that gave us a general idea of this is how much it's going to cost for a student for that particular year. Yeah. Yes, oh, go ahead.
Uh, is there any requirements as far as the parents? I know I, I was raised in private schools and my parents have certain requirements as far as donating to time and things that may be used for the school.
Not at this time. We don't, we don't, we don't see that as being part of it right now. And now when it comes to fundraising and things like that, if we, we need to do that, we will be expecting parents as best as they can to help in those ways. So yeah, that, that will be an expectation that if we have to do fundraisers, that parents will participate. No, no. I, I did see that in other, in other private schools that yes, parents had to say they would, you know, donate 10 hours of their time or they were donating $250 extra of their money. So right now, we don't see that as necessary. Yeah, yes.
I was wondering just because of the private prison school, I know he has a specific day for chapel where all the kids bed and have service. Do you guys plan on having?
Yes, don't know exactly what that's going to look like. But yes, that is definitely something that we anticipate having part of the school week. Yep.
Am I supposed to, I'm just thinking more for myself, like I would have a kindergartner. I have attached a kindergarten at an 11th grader. Would there be the opportunity for that kindergartner to stay that extra hour? So.
It's, it's one of those things that we're definitely looking into and wanting to see if that is something that parents are going to need. We, we want as many kids to be able to come here as possible and so we're willing to figure out how we can make that work. Yeah. All the way in the back.
Additional things like physical education and music, what would that like?
Yeah, okay, so PE, we would definitely be doing some of that right now. Kindergartners, one of their favorite things to do is dodgeball. They enjoy dodgeball immensely and we get to do that right here. So we would be able to do things like kickball and, and just different things in here and out in our lawn. And we do hope to maybe have a little playground area where they will be able to do that. And music is actually integrated into the curriculum. So I believe it's like in third grade, they learn how to play the recorder. So could get very noisy at your house. Yes. That's another one of those things that we, if that is something that parents are going to need or want, we are willing to have that conversation and figure that out. Yeah, I just don't know exactly what that's going to look like right now. This is such a, we have put a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of prayer into this, but it is definitely going to be a, I don't know.
Improvise, adapt, and overcome.
And we talked about that, that would be the January meeting too, where there's just been a whole lot of work put into it. But in January, you sit down as a whole group and say, this is what's working. This is not, what, what do we need to do with a, a school team?
DC, is there going to be homework responsibilities or?
There will be some homework, yes. I can't tell you exactly how much that's going to be because I am not totally familiar with all of their stuff. There will be some homework component to it, but it will be minimal. Because this curriculum was actually written as homeschool curriculum. So when you're at home, it's all homework. So it really was, let's get it all done as we're doing it. Yes?
Uh, can you talk about the advisor, advisory committee and the deacon board? Maybe for those who don't know what that is or what that looks like?
Sure. Okay, so we have not put our whole advisory committee together yet or advisory board, but we anticipate that the advisory board will be made up of parents, teachers and other community members that have a vested interest in our school. And the deacon board of First Baptist Church right now is made up of seven? Six, six men and our pastor. So it's the intention that the advisory board will handle most things with the deacon board giving their stamp of approval on that. Yeah, yes.
Can I kind of back to Ash's question a little bit? And I know you said you don't know what it's going to look like, but what do you, what does she mean? Like, is it a church service that you do during the week or?
Oh, chapel you're referring to?
Chapel, a chapel.
So it would just be a time like, it would be sort of like a Sunday morning message? Yep, exactly.
And singing fun songs, the stuff like that, yeah. Yeah, like right now, the kids are learning. I don't know if any of the kindergartners came home singing bullfrogs and butterflies. So just, you know, things like that. Yeah, yes.
With the non-accreditation piece, how are you going to support the high school students with career, college, co-tech schools and then also the youth sports?
So what do you mean by that?
Well, as a non-accredited school, um, there'll be some hoops to jump through, through the NCAA, CIA to be allowed to play sports, but who did?
Okay.
So that's something you'll have to look into.
Mm-hmm, and accreditation is something we're looking into. That's just one of the pieces of the puzzle that has not been put into place yet. But we need you to know that we are not accredited right now. And as far as accreditation goes, we, I, I have firsthand experience with a student graduating from Tames Christian Academy, which doesn't actually exist. It would be my house. And she had no issues getting into the college that she want. It was a state school, an Oregon state school.
It totally opened up their mouth. I told her, you know, I think parents need to understand that it's not a barrier that a lot, a lot of colleges are looking at SAT or ACT and not worried about their credits, so to speak.
Yeah, but yeah, I didn't know that about, for collegiate sports.
Collegiate is an NCAA fairhouse. I'm not very sad to be on it. I am, but I'm not. That's something that we have to look at. And I think the other part pieces is when we, when we choose to homeschool our kids or look for something alternative, a lot of the scholarships. a lot of the scholarships, say, Lakeview High School grad, they do not say a Lake County school. The day they find them, the calls McDonald's are, they work with the homeschool. There's some pieces out there that it makes it more of a struggle. So I was wondering how you guys would support a junior and senior who's looking for that next level career tech classes, inspirational.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question right now, but that's definitely something we can look into and and figure that out for them. Yeah, walk alongside them with this and learn right along with them. And these first years will definitely be a lot of figuring things out and what how to say this correctly without saying like we don't know what we're doing. Because we do know what we're doing, but we know things are going to change and what we have envisioned may not be what works best. And so we're willing to investigate and take more time and change as necessary and do what we need to do, yeah, yes.
So the advisory board, is there going to be a single point of contact or a principal or?
Yes, we will be working on that too, that there will be someone that will be in charge, yeah, yep. These have all been great questions, things that we need to also find out about, yes.
And I think also we'll be learning a lot of those answers where you're going.
I think we'll learn some more answers, yes, yeah.
You're helping those graduates up lines for colleges and things like that. For those of us that are homeschool, we don't have to get through those hoops. If it wasn't difficult, if you keep your records, if you've done your credits and you have the proof and they go through the testing as they should, it's, I encourage, you know, people to not be scared of that because it is, you know, very well. But and they do get those same opportunities, so I wonder if you will get more of that.
I'm hoping so, but because it it can vary state by state too, so, yes.
And this might kind of be different because we're from Arizona and we're in district homeschooling and they have something called, I think, the Calmnet Scholarship Account and it can cover things like cost of tuition, curriculum and whatnot, does Oregon?
No, Oregon does not have that. However, I do know that there's a petition being circulated where they are trying to get that on the fall ballot, that there will be Oregon's school choice. And so what that means is a certain portion of your doll, tax dollars can be allocated to homeschool curriculum, private schools. So there is, there is a movement happening right now where that could be possible. So if that's something you personally feel is important, I'm trying to see, remember where I found that, but there's a petition that you can go on and print out and sign and send in and your your name will be counted to try and get that on the Oregon ballot, so, yeah. Yes, that's okay.
When you're talking about the newsletters and stuff, there's obviously a lot of decisions, a lot of things that have to be made and happen. Do you have to be enrolled to get these newsletters and updates or can you be like, like me, a parent, considering this? But when I can see it, like as things evolve, will we also get, be able to get those updates or? I don't know how you guys are setting up.
Okay, when I'm talking newsletters, I mean, like when the school year begins and the teachers send out a newsletter each month to the parents of the students. Now, as far as things as they develop, we'd be happy to share information. You can, and I and I neglected to put this in our packet, my email address and or just call the church and we can share with you what we have decided and what we're moving forward with. I I will tell you that we will likely put an end date for enrollment. That way we can plan and and move ahead and know what we're looking at for the fall. So I do anticipate there will be an end date for enrollment, enrollment will be closed, yes.
Plus watch the church's Facebook page.
Yes, yeah, and I and I do try and anything that is pertinent to the school, we will share on places like Lakeview Announcements and Lakeview Happenings.
And we'll likely have a Facebook page for our schools.
Eventually, we'll have a Facebook page, but don't look up Cornerstone Christian School because you'll find a million of them, there's a lot of them, so.
And on the email thing, if, Suzy, would you hold up my cards that are back there? That I have, my business cards are back there, if you want to just take one of those on your way out, certainly email me if you have a question, oh, I forgot to ask, you know, something like that. Happy to ignore, I mean, happy to help you, I'll be checking my email.
Yeah, and I know that this is a big decision for parents to make. We're talking about a financial investment here and so we don't, we don't take your decision lightly and you shouldn't take your decision lightly either. And if you need more time or would like to sit down and talk to us one-on-one, we are very happy to schedule a meeting and do that.
So here's the thing on that financial piece. I've always been as a Christian under the philosophy that wherever God guides, God provides. And so if you're thinking of this, if you feel strongly about this and you you want this, please don't be discouraged because financially you're not able to do this. I I would rather have us know that you're there, that your interest level is what it is and I'd rather have us prayerfully consider it. My wife and I have been part of a group of pastors and wives here that in the town that have all expressed interest that their church, even though they don't have the facility to do what we're doing, they want to know how they can support it in some way. So we've we've brought brushstrokes, some ideas, like maybe there's a scholarship fund from the Nazarene Church or from the Pastor Nate's Fellowship there. We don't know what that looks like specifically, but I don't want anybody to be discouraged and go away because the financial piece. Certainly wherever God guides, he provides and I think that'll happen. But we have folks here in our fellowship, there's folks all around the town that would love to get behind someone in this, maybe like a grandparent or, you know, I could just see it coming from all angles, wherever God's people are, he can just tap them and say, this is what I want you to do and they'll be obedient and they'll do it, so, that's it.
Anything else?
The two things with a question and answer thing is how to get them started and then what do you think the last one is? How to get them stopped, right? So here we go, in three, two, one, that's it.
Okay.
Cool, you want to pray something?
Sure, and when we're done here, if you have other questions that maybe you didn't want to broadcast to the whole group, come find me, come find Pastor Chris, come find one of the people that stood up earlier and we'd be happy to talk to you. All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for this evening. Thank you for everyone that came out to learn more about your school. And Lord, I pray as we move forward that you would give us wisdom on the next steps that we need to take. And Lord, I pray that you would make it clear to the parents here and to those that will be watching this later that if this is the right place for their children or not and that you would give them the wisdom on on making that decision. Lord, again, just thank you for this opportunity. We are excited to see children growing in the knowledge of you and growing academically. And just what a great, what a great thing that you are doing here and we're so excited to be a part of that. Bless these families as they go home this evening, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, amen, God bless you all, thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming.